Good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:30 PM on Wednesday, November 12, 2025, and this meeting is called to order of the Monrovia Planning Commission. First up, please stand and follow Commissioner Janasek in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, in the physical, liberty and justice of our
Thank you, Commissioner Janasek. Moving along, next, we would normally have approval of minutes, but we have none to approve for this meeting. Oh, sorry about that. I skipped something. Let's do a roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Austin, Vice Chair Rose, and Chair Brown are excused. Commissioner Stahira is filling in his acting chair. Commissioner Janasek?
Here.
Scheffler? Stahira?
Here.
Vashani?
Here.
Thank you very much. So next would be approval of minutes. We have no minutes to approve in this meeting. So following that in the agenda is the public input portion of tonight's meeting. So at this time, citizens with items to discuss that are not on the agenda tonight are welcome to approach the podium and speak. And just a reminder, we may not discuss or vote on these items, but the time for that input is now. Do I have anybody that wishes to speak on items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, let's move along to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. We have two public hearing items on the agenda today, PH1 and PH2. First up is PH1, which is a request to approve two variance requests, three minor exceptions, and a neighborhood design compatibility review. The subject property is at 113 South Mountain Avenue with Cadi Damlockian as applicant. And these approvals would allow for the construction of a single-family residence at the subject property. I believe we have Associate Planner Gillespie with the staff report. Take it away.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. As you mentioned, there's three variances, two exceptions, and a design review, all for a new two-story, single-family home at 113 South Mountain. So just for some history about this property, some of you may know that this property had a large pine tree on the side. And in May of 2024, this pine tree fell on the house that was previously there. It demolished about half of the house, and currently it sits vacant. The property, it's located within the PD Area 2. So there's Plan Development Area 2, which allows normally for multifamily development. And when we take a look at this block of P2, you can see the size of the property really stands out as being the smallest on the block. And when we take a closer look, you can see that the lot, it really has very tight property constraints that limit development potential. So the property, it's 58 feet deep and only 43 feet wide. And in total, it's just under 2,500 square feet in size. When compared to other properties in this zone, most of them are closer to a little over 7,000 square feet in size. So in order to build almost any development, you would need at least two variance requests, which are before you tonight, and as well as exceptions, including a side yard setback exception, a rear yard setback minor exception, and a backup clearance from the garage. And the variance requests are to exceed the maximum floor area, as well as reduce the front yard setback. So this is a picture of the site as it currently stands. You can see what remains of the home is still there. And it's on either side of the property, you can see there are garage structures. So it really kind of sits on its own in this block. And this is the proposed development that will replace it. You can see it's a two-story with the minimal design cues found in the neighborhood. So the site meets most development standards. However, as mentioned before, it does need a variance request to exceed the maximum floor area ratio. The maximum is normally 40%. They're requesting 57%. It needs this variance in order to meet the minimum dwelling size for a single-family home. Normally, the maximum floor area allowed for this property is just under 1,000 square feet. Also, they are requesting a nine-foot front yard setback, which is much smaller than the 25-foot standard. And then when we look at the exceptions, it's a three-foot setback on the north side and a 16-foot rear yard setback. And finally, 10-foot backup distance from the garage door. So on this slide, you can see how that relates to the site. So the house, it's designed as a single structure fairly centered in the property. It's positioned closer to the front yard in order to allow more of a backyard space that is more usable for the resident. And they've positioned the house closer to the front in order to provide access on the south side to the rear of the property. And when we take a closer look at the architectural materials, it's more of like a modern but minimal traditional style, using stucco siding, composite horizontal siding on key areas of the home, and a standing seam metal roof for the top and bottom roof elements. Overall, the building will be only 25 feet tall. The maximum height allowed is 27 feet within this area. And you can see, based on the front and side elevations, they've added wall articulation and modulations, so it's not just a stucco box in the middle. A part of neighborhood compatibility, we look at the context in which it's designed. And you can see this neighborhood has a mix of styles, both older and modern or mid-century. It mostly resembles a home, a multifamily home across the street, using that stucco and horizontal siding elements that are found. Another aspect is privacy impacts and window placement. So they've been very careful in the window placement and size. They've tried to limit larger windows to the front and the rear of the home, where there's more space for landscaping that can be added, and minimize the windows on the sides. It's also, you can see, it's been placed pretty far away from other residences, the closest being about 40 feet, 41 feet from the residents to the northwest. And when we look at the street frontage and how it compares to the neighboring structures, you can see that the nine-foot setback for the front does seem very small, but when compared to the neighbor to the north, their side setback is only actually nine feet, 9.75 feet. So you can see it's relatively in the same line of that structure. And also to the south, the 10-foot setback for the garage is in line with the 10-foot side setback with the home to the south. So part of this project included a review by the Development Review Committee. This occurred on September 3. With this review, there was public comment from the neighbor to the south. They had concerns at the time because originally there was a three-foot setback proposed on the south side. They had concerns about access, particularly utility service or utility access and fire emergency access. Also, there were some concerns about privacy impacts with the second floor, but these were addressed with the redesign of the house being set five feet away. The Development Review Committee also had some input on the layout. There was some concern about the driveway depth and the parking, as well as utility and easement access in coordination with the utility hookups and the front yard driveway setback. The staff worked with the applicant to try to address all of these concerns. And we feel with the conditions, they've been fully analyzed and addressed. Also, with this project, there was a public hearing notice that was sent out, including a 400-foot mailing radius, a sign posting in the front yard. And with that, we did receive two comments. One was in favor of the project from a neighbor on Wildrose, and one, a comment had concerns about potential encroachments onto their property. This was from the neighbor to the north. However, with the setback of three feet, that is taken from the property line, not the fence that is currently there, they did a survey of their property and found that their fence encroached onto their property. But there is no new fencing proposed or required with this development, so that would not change. We've also added several conditions in order to help address these concerns, also any concerns brought up through the Development Review Committee. These include a survey for any future fencing that might be proposed, as well as a covenant prohibiting parking within the driveway area. This was a concern brought up during the DRC meeting, that public parking could encroach into the public right-of-way. Also, landscaping is required and designed in a way to minimize privacy impacts. And finally, a condition was added to secure the property with temporary fencing to keep people out. And then this was reviewed by the Fire Department Building Division and Public Works. We've added their conditions as well, including fire sprinklers, grading, and billing plan check, and seeing if the existing utilities can be utilized if possible. So with that, staff is recommending approval with the conditions in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions, as well as the applicant. They're available. So this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Vincent. Do we have any questions from Commissioners for Vincent, the applicant? Go ahead, Commissioner Janasek.
My one question is, is just maybe a little bit of clarity on the condition for the parking covenant. I guess what is, you know, aside from like covenant, what is like, is there, like, do people report if people have parked in those kinds of spaces? Or, yeah, I guess what is the conditions as we hear that?
I can try to address that for you, Commissioner Janasek. So the purpose of that covenant is, we know that the applicant plans to reside in this home. And although they've agreed not to park in that driveway, the covenant would run with the land, so if the property were to be sold to a future homeowner, they would immediately know that no parking would be allowed in that. So it's really to memorialize in perpetuity the restriction.
Commissioner Vashani?
What was the depth of that driveway?
About 10 feet.
And at 10 feet, was an issue?
So it was a concern brought up at the meeting about having an encroachment in the public right-of-way, people parking in front of the garage.
And the owner was okay with this?
We did talk to the owner before adding the condition, and yes, they did agree to it.
Okay, thank you.
Were there any public comments received about this?
Yes, we received two comments for today's, tonight's meeting. One was just that they were in favor of the exceptions. The other was concerns about encroachment of the house onto the neighboring property. However, as mentioned, the setback is three feet, but that's taken from the property line. So it would not encroach into the property.
Thank you. And one more about the fencing. So you mentioned that there would be a survey required for any future modifications to the fencing. Can you just remind us what is the current state of the fence around the property?
Yes, so to the south, because the tree fell over, the, those owners replaced the fencing that was damaged. And to the north, there was a fence permit issued in 2005. However, the current owner did a survey and found that it encroached onto their property a little bit. So that was mainly the issue. It's really between the two property owners is the fencing.
And that one is still in place where it was or where it has been?
Yes, undamaged.
Anything at the rear of the property?
There is fencing to the rear. We haven't heard anything about that that hasn't changed.
Great. Any other questions from Commissioners before we go? All right, seeing none, this is the time and place for public input regarding PH1. We'll accept testimony in the following order. The applicant, if they wish to speak, then persons in favor, then persons with concerns, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond to those concerns. Just a reminder, if you would like to speak, just please come to the podium, state your name, and we will, and address your comments to me, and we'll go from there. Would the applicant like to speak? Do we have the applicant? No. All right, that's a no. Do we have any persons in favor who would wish to speak? Seeing none, do we have any persons with concerns about this agenda item? All right, that makes this easy. The public testimony portion of this hearing is closed, and it's time for the Commission to deliberate. In that brief interlude, have any more questions arisen? Nope. Okay, don't see any questions from the Commission. So if there's no further discussion, do I have a motion?
Yeah. I move to approve variance identified as VAR 2025-001, variance VAR 2025-002, minor exception ME 2025-0010, minor exception ME 2025-0011, minor exception ME 2025-0018, and Level 6 Neighborhood Compatibility Design Review, DR 2025-0018, with the conditions as presented in the staff report.
All right, any due to a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Could we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Janasek?
Aye.
Scheffler?
Yes.
Vashani?
Yes.
Acting Chair Stahira?
Yes. With that, the motion is approved. Could someone read the appeal language?
Yes, Commissioners Stahira. So all decisions of the Planning Commission may be appealed if filed in writing within 10 days of tonight's decision. And an appeal fee does apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Buremaho. All right, moving right along in our agenda. Next up is PH2, which is a request to approve resolutions recommending City Council take several actions regarding a subject property, including certifying an environmental impact report, adopting a specific plan, approving a general plan amendment, approving a zoning amendment, and approving a tentative partial map, and approving a conditional use permit. The subject property is at 701 South Myrtle Avenue with BGB Myrtle LLC Scott Griggs as applicant. And these approvals would allow for the construction of a five-story mixed-use building at the subject property. I believe we have Planning Division Manager John Mayer on deck to deliver the staff report. Take it away, John.
Thank you very much, Chair and Commissioners, and thank you, Chairs Stahira, for covering that first slide for me. That covers everything we're going to talk about. And based on that, just since we have a lot to cover tonight, I thought I'd provide a quick roadmap of what we'll cover tonight. I'll start with how this area, 701 South Myrtle, fits in with the city's long-term vision. I'll then walk through the feasibility analysis that was done for the project. We'll cover the project design and the public realm improvements. After that, we'll look at the environmental review and the Development Review Committee feedback before wrapping up with staff's recommendations. So this area of 701 South Myrtle has been an area of part of Monrovia that's had a long-term vision for a long time. Back in 2008, the general plan identified South Myrtle as an opportunity to extend the character of Old Town down toward the 210 freeway. And the idea was to turn what was once an industrial corridor into a walkable mixed-use extension of Old Town. We've already seen parts of that vision come to life with projects like Avalon and Paragon. These projects have helped bring more activity, housing, and storefronts into the corridor, putting more feet on the street in the Old Town District. The project tonight is considered a next step in that long-term plan. This slide shows the current site. It's a single-story, 1979 office and light industrial building with a very large surface parking lot. It's one of the key remaining development sites in Old Town Extension District, and it's well-positioned to continue Old Town's walkable character. So how we got here? The developer approached the city with a larger and taller mixed-use project than what the city's current standards allow. The city paused that initial idea so we can study what was appropriate here. We looked at the design context, economic feasibility, and long-term goals for the corridor, and this led to a very collaborative approach with the city and the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments working together on an independent feasibility study for this site. This graphic shows where we are today versus what the proposal could bring. The idea is to move from a low-industrial, I'm sorry, a low-intensity industrial site to a pedestrian-friendly mixed-use corridor that continues Old Town's street experience. So regarding this independent economic study, EPS was the company that was selected to test whether the project on this site could actually be built under the current zoning. They found that the old standards, the 54 units per acre and the four-story height limit that's currently in place today simply didn't pencil out for a project like this. Increasing the density and the height would make the project feasible while still maintaining strong design controls. And that analysis has guided us towards the creation of this PD 29. PD 29 is a new land use designation created specifically just for this site. It would allow the density and height needed to make a mixed-use project feasible and requires onsite affordable units. It also allows additional density and height to achieve the economic feasibility. It would require onsite affordable housing equal to 10% of the total units, plus three at the moderate income level. And it also ties the entire project to a site-specific, specific plan, which gives the city a strong oversight over the design. The way we can think about this PD 29 is it works kind of like a puzzle. We're balancing three pieces at once: affordability, a design that is thoughtful and context-sensitive, and project feasibility. Each piece matters, and if one is missing, the picture just doesn't come together. So what is this PD or Plan Development? This is a tool that the city has used for decades. It allows us to tailor the heights, the density, and the design requirements to fit the neighborhood. We've used this successfully in Old Town, for example, Colorado Commons. This was a mixed-use housing and retail development on a former parking lot. We also have a PD for the adaptive reuse of that 1950s-era telecommunications building that's now a storage facility on the upper floors and ground-floor retail just east of Old Town. PDs are customized zoning tools created by the city. They're not a one-size-fits-all. Instead, they let us tailor development standards to fit the unique character and goals of a specific site. The specific plan is essentially a detailed rulebook. In this case, 701 South Myrtle Specific Plan is the rulebook that would implement what we call PD 29, the Plan Development Designation for the site. What that means, it takes the general framework of PD 29 and spells out exactly what can be built here, things like the design standards, the land uses that are allowed, and the development regulations that apply. The purpose is to make sure that the project moves forward in a way that's consistent with the city's general plan. And for this area, the general plan calls for a walkable mixed-use corridor that extends the vitality of Old Town Monrovia, south towards Station Square. And the specific plan is the tool that ensures this project contributes to that vision. So the role of this specific plan is to put the PD 28 designation into action. That means it takes the site, which was previously zoned to light industrial uses, and establishes the framework for a mixed-use development with both housing and commercial space. The plan also sets detailed standards to make sure the project extends Old Town's pedestrian environment. This includes required structured parking instead of surface lots, widening the sidewalks, creating a public plaza at Myrtle and Olive, and ensuring active ground-floor uses face Myrtle Avenue. It also requires a strong street-facing design, elements such as the use of brick and stucco and stone so that the new building fits well with its surroundings. Finally, the plan makes sure the affordable housing is included, and the design standards applied to the project are consistent with the character of Old Town Monrovia. This slide here now focuses on the development project itself, the actual building that would be constructed under the specific plan. The project covers a 1.61-acre site and proposes a five-story mixed-use building. The height is set at 65 feet, with architectural features permitted to extend about 80 feet. Along Myrtle Avenue, the top floor steps back 15 feet to reduce the apparent scale from the street. The building total includes 204 residential units, made up of 20 studios, 141, I'm sorry, 147 one-bedrooms, and 37 two-bedrooms. Within this total, 20 units are affordable, 17 are reserved for low-income households, and three are for moderate-income households, in line with the PD 29 requirements. Parking for the project is provided, consistent with the state density bonus law, which allows reduced parking ratios for the projects that include affordable housing. So instead of the city's standard 2.5 spaces per unit, this law permits one space per studio and one-bedroom units, and one and a half spaces for the two-bedroom or more units. And based on these ratios, the project provides 271 spaces, meeting the state requirements while supporting a more efficient use of the land in a downtown setting. The project also includes a mix of public and private open spaces. These include a new public plaza at the corner of Myrtle and Olive, two landscaped courtyards for the residents, and private balconies and a rooftop deck. Together, these features reflect how the specific plan translates into a single development project designed to add housing, incorporate affordability, and provide adequate parking under the state standards, and contribute new public space along the corridor. This slide is an aerial photo showing where the project is located in the broader South Myrtle corridor. The site sits at the southwest corner of Myrtle and Olive, right at the edge of Old Town's southern boundary. It's within what we call the Old Town District, sorry, the Old Town Extension District, in the area where the city has envisioned that walkable mixed-use character. You can also see how the project is positioned between two major developments, the Paragon to the northeast and the Avalon to the southwest. And that gives this site an important role in connecting those projects and creating some continuity along Myrtle. Finally, the site is about 3/4 of a mile from the Metro A Line Station, which helps support the transit use and reduces vehicle trips. So overall, the location fits very well with the city's long-term vision for this walkable corridor linking Old Town to Station Square. for this walkable corridor linking Old Town to Station Square. Here's some images of, just to look at the surrounding context for site. You can see that to the north, we do have some shops and apartments leading into Old Town. To the east, across Myrtle is the Paragon Project, which is three to four stories tall. To the south, we still have some remnants of some office and light industrial buildings, then transitioning into that five-story Avalon Project. And to the west, the area steps down into some light industrial and residential neighborhoods, which the project design takes into account through its massing and setbacks. Here is an overall site plan. I just want to walk you through this, moving clockwise around the site. At the corner of Myrtle and Olive, the plan creates a new public plaza. This plaza provides outdoor seating and serves as a main pedestrian entry, activating the corner and linking directly to the ground-floor commercial space. The main residential lobby is also located here, giving residents direct access to Myrtle, reinforcing the pedestrian orientation of the building. Moving south, along Myrtle Avenue, the frontage includes a brick-clad arcade. This is a covered walkway just meant to improve the pedestrian environment and providing some access to the commercial storefront. The arcade also fronts the project's fitness studio, one of the indoor amenities for the residents, and helping just to keep that activity along Myrtle Avenue. Continuing around the west side, the rear alley is designed for the service access, including deliveries and designated space for resident move-ins. Locating these functions here helps keep them out of view from Myrtle Avenue and Olive Avenue, preserving those frontages for pedestrians. And then along the western side, between the alley and Olive Avenue, the plan provides a small outdoor dog park. This space is reserved for the residents and screened with landscaping and provides a private open space amenity for the residents. And then finally, at Olive, this is the vehicular entry into the structured parking garage. The garage extends one and a half levels below grade and provides a total of 329 spaces. Of those, 255 are secured behind a gate for residents with access controlled by a call box. Another 50 spaces are set aside for guests, and 10 are located in front of the gate for easy visitor access. So this approach keeps the resident parking secure while making guests and customer parking accessible, ensuring that it's all parked and accommodated onsite without the need for surface parking lots. Moving up to the second-floor podium level, I just want to stress that this is the second floor, not the ground floor. This plan introduces the project's larger amenity areas. There are two landscaped courtyards designed with seating and open space intended for resident gathering and recreation. In addition to the courtyards, the clubroom is located at this level, providing an indoor amenity space that complements the outdoor areas. Together, these features create a mix of indoor and outdoor spaces available to the residents. Access to this podium level is restricted to residents, and because it sits above the street, the courtyards have an added degree of privacy. And finally, the structured parking beneath the podium is directly connected by elevators, so residents and their guests can move between the garage and the ground floor and the podium level without needing to exit the building. Levels two and three are what we would call the typical residential floors of this project. These levels contain a mix of studios, one-bedrooms and two-bedroom units, consistent with the overall unit count in the specific plan. From the outside, the facades of these floors don't change much compared to the base level. Windows are aligned in a consistent pattern, maintaining a nice rhythm that matches Old Town's traditional architecture. And for private open space, residents will have their balconies or Juliet railings, which provide some opportunities to look out over the street and into the courtyards. On the fourth residential level, the building introduces a step-back along Myrtle Avenue. This means that the top floor is pulled back from the street by about 15 feet, which helps soften the overall height when viewed from the sidewalk. Within the step-back, the specific plan includes a rooftop terrace that faces Myrtle Avenue and the San Gabriel Mountains. This terrace is designed as a shared open space for residents, functioning as a lounge and gathering area. And along Olive Avenue, the building also steps back at the upper level, creating some additional residential deck areas and further reducing the building's bulk at the street's street edge. This is a cross, this is a cross-section showing the full vertical organization of the project, looking from the south. On the right-hand side of the diagram is Myrtle Avenue, and on the left-hand side is the location of the resident dog park along Olive Avenue. Starting below grade, the project includes one and a half levels of subterranean parking. This is where the resident, guest, and commercial parking is accommodated, secured by a gate and connected by the building elevators. Above the parking is the podium level located on the second floor. This is, this level contains two large courtyards for the residents and a pool and another outdoor seating and dining space. The next three floors, levels two through four, contain the residential units, and these floors maintain a consistent rhythm and design pattern, as I mentioned earlier, along Myrtle. At the top, the building steps back from Myrtle Avenue, reducing that perceived scale when viewed from the street. This slide highlights the planting and hardscape approach for the project. Along Myrtle Avenue, three existing street trees will remain in place. Along Olive Avenue, new street trees are proposed to provide some shade and visual interest. The public plaza at Myrtle and Olive incorporate widened sidewalks, shade trees, planters, and decorative paving, street furniture, lighting, and other elements within the public right-of-way will need to follow city standards. Within the site, the courtyards and dog park are designed with a palette of drought-tolerant shrubs, native or adaptive tree species, and turf or ground cover where appropriate. So the design character, this slide just gives a sense of the overall architectural character of the project. The design blends contemporary mixed-use architecture with some traditional materials, bricks, stones, stucco, and articulated bays. The ground floor is designed to be very open and transparent with large storefront windows and active street frontage. This helps keep the pedestrian environment lively and connected. You'll also notice that the upper floors step-back as the building goes up. Those step-backs help reduce the massing and soften the overall appearance from the street. All of these elements, the materials, the transparency, the step-backs, and the proportions are all intentional. They're designed to make the project feel compatible with the Old Town Extension District and to continue to the visual rhythm of the corridor. And this particular elevation, this is one that faces toward Old Town Monrovia, so this is a view that you would see going south on Myrtle. So the next few slides, I just want to focus specifically on that connection and explain why the project is not expected to create any adverse impacts on the Old Town Historic District. Just want to walk through the historic resources analysis that was completed for the environmental impact report. Even though Old Town is not a formal designated historic district at the local, state, or federal level, it was identified in the city's historic survey as an eligible historic district. And so under CEQA, when an area is considered eligible, we must treat it as a historic resource and evaluate whether a project could impact it. So the city's team, Historic Consultant Debbie Howe-Ardilla, prepared the full technical report on this, and she evaluated the potential Old Town Commercial Historic District using the CEQA criteria of integrity. Things like setting and feeling and design and association are all attributes of historic preservation. And because the site is several blocks away, separated by a major intersection, and because there are nonhistoric buildings in between, the study found that the project would not change the district's character or impact its potential eligibility. The building also incorporates a lot of design, a lot of design elements, such as step-backs and traditional materials, and a strong pedestrian orientation. All of this helps it fit within the Old Town Extension context. So in short, the analysis concluded that the project would not create or direct, a direct or indirect significant impact to the potential Old Town Historic District under CEQA. And this slide simply explains why CEQA requires us to complete this kind of study. CEQA doesn't just look at designated landmarks. It also requires the city to evaluate these resources that have been identified as potentially eligible. So because Old Town has been identified as eligible, CEQA treats it as a historic resource. So the next series of slides will be to show the architectural images of the project. This is a view from the southwest quarter of South Myrtle and West Olive Avenue, facing that corner plaza I discussed earlier. The design incorporates a brick-clad arcade at the ground level with commercial storefronts, and this treatment is consistent with Old Town's pedestrian environment and helps activate the street. This is a view looking south on South Myrtle, showing the corner plaza and scale relative to the Paragon development across Myrtle. The public plaza at Myrtle and Olive incorporates widened sidewalks, shade trees, planters, and decorative paving, street furniture, lighting, and other elements within the public right-of-way will all need to follow city standards. This is another view. This one is across the street of Myrtle Avenue, showing how the storefronts are framed with the canopies providing shade along that ground floor area. This is the view looking northwest on South Myrtle Avenue on the south alley elevation. This is the side of the building where the service functions are located, including the loading entry. This is, there's a loading entry for deliveries and resident move-ins. This is also the location where the trash pickup will occur as well. This is sort of a massing model and a view looking northeast from the rear alley. The design is more simplified in this view compared to the Myrtle Avenue, but the plan does call for lighter materials and some visual breaks in the design, like changes in the materials to avoid that flat wall appearance and keep the facade in rhythm with the Old Town's character. And finally, this is a rendering looking southeast towards the project from across West Olive Avenue. The ground floor on this side incorporates residential entries directly at the sidewalk, creating a more residential scale and reinforcing a neighborhood feel along this edge of the specific plan. The length of this West Olive facade, as you can see, is broken into some distinct building blocks, separated by two podium-level courtyards, which all help reduce the apparent mass of the building and provide some visual balance. So before a project like this can move forward, the city is required by the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, to study whether it can have any significant effects on the environment. For 701 South Myrtle, the city prepared a draft environmental impact report, or an EIR, and that was available for public review from July 3rd through August 18th, 2025. During that time, residents, agencies, and organizations had the opportunity to comment on the analysis. We've also prepared the final EIR, which includes responses to those comments and identifies the mitigation measures or the specific steps that the developer must take to avoid or lessen any potential impacts that were identified. So the EIR looked at a wide range of environmental topics, everything from air quality and traffic to cultural resources, noise, utilities, and public services. Each topic was analyzed to determine whether the project could create any significant impacts, and if so, whether those impacts could be reduced through mitigation. Across all 15 environmental areas, every potential impact has been reduced to a less-than-significant level. So that means there are no unavoidable or unmitigated environmental impacts associated with the project. Some topics, like aesthetics, air quality, transportation, and energy use, were already below significant thresholds. Others, like cultural resources, noise during construction, geology and soils, hazardous materials, needed some mitigation measures in this case, and we'll cover those next. And just to give you a sense of the city's due diligence, these are the main mitigation measures that will be conditions of approval for the project. For the cultural and tribal resources issue area, before any demolition or excavation begins, construction workers will receive training on how to recognize artifacts or tribal materials. If anything is uncovered, work must stop immediately, and a qualified archaeologist and tribal monitor must evaluate and handle the find appropriately. With respect to the geology and soils issue area, the project must follow detailed recommendations from a licensed geotechnical engineer, including engineered shoring for the underground parking levels, proper soil compaction, and foundation design standards, all to ensure safety and prevent settlement or instability. For the hazards materials environmental issue, because the site once had a gas station, there's a chance an old underground storage tank could still be buried. The contractor will need to investigate, and if found, remove and dispose of it safely under the state and local oversight, including soil testing and cleanup if contamination is detected. Regarding construction noise, the project must prepare a construction noise management plan to limit noise for neighbors. This includes maintaining mufflers, limiting loud activities to daytime hours, posting contact information for onsite, posting contact information onsite for any complaints, noise complaints, and installing temporary sound barriers if needed. Regarding utilities and waste, the project must comply with all city and state recycling and waste diversion programs, confirm that the utility systems have capacity, and include electrical vehicle charging infrastructure. Regarding transportation, the project qualifies as a low-vehicle miles-traveled area, meaning residents are expected to drive a lot less because of its location near downtown, near shops and jobs and transit, which aligns well with the state environmental goals for reducing car dependence. So together, these mitigation measures are there to ensure that the project is environmentally responsible and consistent with CEQA's intent to avoid or reduce impacts wherever feasible. And at this time, I want to, just want to acknowledge some of the comments that we received that fall outside the CEQA review but are still very important to the community and to the city. The three main themes we heard were the heightened scale with residents concerned that the five-story building near Old Town might feel too tall or out of character. People also talked about the architecture. They wanted the design to feel like Monrovia, not something generic. The loss of the tall pine trees came up frequently. They've been part of the landscape here for decades. Parking and traffic were also mentioned, especially fears about congestion or overflow into public areas. Some residents expressed concerns about construction noise or dust, and there's a general feeling of what we might call development fatigue in the community, the sense that several new apartment buildings have already gone up nearby. And of course, these are understandable concerns, and staff and the applicant have worked carefully to address these through the project design and enforceable conditions. We also received a letter yesterday from an organization called SAFER. This stands for the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility. And their letter focuses on two specific CEQA topics: air quality and noise. On air quality, they argue that the EIR underestimated certain construction emissions and should have included a health risk assessment related to diesel particulate matter. On noise, they argue that more detail should have been provided on the modeling assumptions and that the construction and operational noise levels may be understated. So SAFER's position is that the EIR doesn't fully analyze or disclose these issues and that the document should be revised or recirculated. For tonight, we do have the applicant CEQA consultant here, Tracy Zinn, and she will respond to these SAFER technical assertions during the public comment portion of the meeting. And staff will include both the letter and the consultant's responses in the final EIR record that goes to the city council. This slide just summarizes the Development Review Committee meeting that took place on October 15th. At that meeting, staff presented the project, walked through the design and circulation, and summarized the key CEQA findings. The applicant team also described how the project supports the city's long-term vision to extend Old Town south along Myrtle. Our historic consultant, Debbie Howe-Ardilla, was there, also presenting her findings of the historic resources analysis, including the conclusion that the project would not impact the potential Old Town Historic District. After the main presentation, the city's departments each reviewed their areas of concerns. The fire department had originally raised some questions about the fire engine movement in the alley. That issue was resolved after the meeting through the addition of a center pullout area within the six-stall alley segment. So there's six parts. So there's six parking spaces along that alley, and the fire department had some concerns about maneuvering some of their trucks. The applicant's architect was able to provide a little more space for those fire trucks to maneuver back there. The police department also asked for some improved emergency access to the building, which was addressed by just adding two designated parking spaces, one on Myrtle and one on Olive, so that they have easy access into that main lobby. That's something they requested both. And also, the Public Works Department reviewed these updated plans and agreed with that circulation layout and the revised striping that's needed for those concerns. So in the end, all departments concurred with the changes, and the DRC supported the project moving forward. And before I conclude this presentation tonight, I just want to briefly highlight a couple of cleanup items that staff updated to make sure everything is fully aligned with the environmental impact report and the conditions of approval. The first one is condition number 28. This deals with the open space and parkland dedication fees. The earlier draft of the condition used an older population estimate, 1.5 persons per bedroom, which understated the total number of future residents. We've now updated that condition to match the population assumptions used in the environmental impact report, which estimates 556 future residents. This update doesn't change the project at all, just simply ensures the condition is consistent with the environmental impact report and their population and housing analysis. The second cleanup item is condition number 37. The original draft of this condition only referenced the mitigation measures from the environmental impact report, but we've now updated that condition so that it clearly requires compliance with all the CEQA commitments in the IR, not just the mitigation measures, but also the design features that the applicant committed to as part of the project and all the regulatory requirements. And the purpose of this update was just to simply consolidate everything all in one comprehensive CEQA compliance condition so that there's no confusion later during plan check or during construction monitoring. Again, this doesn't add any new obligations to the project. These items were just already part of the EIR and makes the condition clearer and more And before we move into the formal recommendations, I just want to take a moment to clarify what it means to certify an environmental impact report and what that actually means under CEQA, and just as importantly, what it doesn't mean. Certifying an EIR means that the environmental document was prepared in accordance with CEQA law. It provides a full disclosure of the project's potential impacts and that the city has exercised its own independent judgment in reviewing and relying on that analysis. So this means that the associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program will be implemented, ensuring that all the mitigation measures, design features, and regulatory requirements identified in the EIR are carried out through the construction operation. Certification does not mean that the planning commission is approving the project. Certification is really a procedural step under CEQA. The commission is simply recommending the council find that the EIR is adequate under CEQA's legal standards. It also does not require the commission to agree with every detail or conclusion in the EIR. The focus is really on whether the document as a whole meets CEQA's requirements for analysis and disclosure. Final project approval itself, including the specific plan, the zoning actions, and the parcel map, will all occur at the city council hearing. So with that clarification, staff is recommending the following actions tonight. Environmental impact report, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution PCR 2025-004, recommending that the city council certify the EIR, adopt CEQA findings effect, and approve the mitigation monitoring program. The general plan amendment, staff recommends adoption of Resolution PCR 2025-0005, recommending the city council approve the general plan amendment, which would establish that Plan Development Area 29. The 701 South Myrtle specific plans, staff recommends adoption of Resolution PCR 2025-006, recommending that the city council approve the 701 South Myrtle specific plan. The zone change and zoning map amendment, the adoption of Resolution PCR 2025-007 would recommend that the city council approve the zoning ordinance amendment and map amendment to reclassify the site from ORD LM to SP, specific plan. And then finally, the tentative parcel map and conditional use permit, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of those to the city council and subject to the conditions in the staff report in data sheet one. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval to the city council, and myself, city attorney, community development director, and the applicant's entire team is here to answer any questions you have on this project.
Thank you, John, for that thorough report, and thanks all for all of the work that went into creating all of these materials and taking this project to where it is today. Do we have any questions from the commission for John or other members of the team? Go ahead, Commissioner Jan Sek.
Yeah, hi. One of the questions I do have is particularly, it's in alignment with one of the concerns or some of the concerns mentioned in the report about the trees and the pine trees that are on that corridor. And while it might not necessarily be completely in alignment with this project in particular, the city of Monrovia has a two-for-one replacement, tree replacement policy. Is that, or do we have any standards for?
The only real protected trees in the city are oak trees, and those are under an oak tree preservation plan. Generally speaking, when a project moves forward and an oak tree is being recommended for removal, then we will bring in either a suggested replacement plan or we, there's no standard. Really, we look at how big the tree is and start from there. But two-for-one has been somewhat of a standard, but there's nothing official about it. There's a lot of things we think about before we recommend that.
Gotcha. Good to know. Thank you.
So let's talk more about trees. Monrovia is considered a tree city, USA, so say the signs as we come into the city limits. And the benefits of a mature, urban, healthy tree canopy are well-known and well-researched. And our general plan, and I believe the specific plan also contain goals and policies that promote and support a healthy tree canopy. So given that, can you talk a little bit more about, you know, the thinking behind the number and the size of trees that are part of this plan and the measures that we have to ensure that this project is achieving those goals in the general plan and the specific plan?
Certainly. Staff did discuss this issue with the developer, and those tall pines have been in place for quite a while. And the fact is, is that the roots of those trees would have a conflict with the subterranean parking that would be constructed right on the site there. Very difficult situation to make that work. The applicant understands that concern and is proposing to plant some substantial trees along that elevation to provide that shade, probably better shading than what the pine trees currently provide at this time. That would help shade the sidewalk and create an even more comfortable pedestrian experience along West Olive there. Some would say also the building also creates a good amount of shading along the sidewalk too, but also the trees really help soften the appearance of that as well. In terms of environmental impact, the trees were analyzed on whether these trees would have an impact to the environment. Since they are considered parking lot trees, basically, the trees were really to decorate the parking lot to make it look a little more aesthetically pleasing. Those were not considered environmental impacts for their removal.
Okay.
I was just going to also add that the specific plan has a dedicated section that actually provides the standards for the submission of a landscape plan that requires the approval of the director, and it outlines the requirements for both irrigation and plant selection and planting notes to make sure that what is planted is sustainable in a long-term manner and that the plantings are sufficient size in comparison to what can be supported upon initial planting.
Follow-up question on the size, particularly for the trees. One of the conditions in the CUP says, it talks about a landscape management plan, and it says minimum 24-inch or 36-inch box trees should be used. How is that, is that complementary to what's in the specific plan? Is that consistent with the size guidelines? Is there anything, is there anything that could be done to encourage larger tree integration into the project, larger than a 36-inch box tree?
Not really, I don't, we haven't really discussed anything larger. Some of the things that I can tell you that our team does as a project goes through development, a development phase into building plan check is our planning team actually works closely with our public works team to look at what's comparable within public right of ways and adjacent to public right of ways. And that's something we do through our development services team, where we have all actually hands-on deck, folks who actually work within the line of landscaping. We actually coordinate with the applicant as well, and that's something we've done consistently on all these larger projects, but have also been taken care to do on these, on new developments since some of these other projects in the past have moved forward since, like, for example, the In-N-Out project, Chick-fil-A, for example.
At what stage in the design and construction process does that type of review and interaction happen?
Upon their initial submit of a landscape plan.
Okay.
So everything right now is concept, but once they start proposing something for us to look at and they have approval, then that's when we start looking at it more carefully.
And does that typically happen after things like most of the hardscape are finalized?
No, it actually happens during the plan check of the entire project.
Of the entire project?
Yeah. Before any permits are issued.
One of the other, continuing with trees, one of the other things that I believe you mentioned, John, and I know the staff report mentions, is preservation of, I think, the three trees on that are right along South Myrtle Avenue. I see language in the CUP that says, you know, preserve those trees where feasible. Is there a commitment to preserve those trees? Would that also be part of the landscape plan? Could we remove the language where feasible there?
Yes, absolutely. I don't know if those trees have been assessed lately to determine their health, but I think that will take place, and if they are viable and healthy trees, and of course, yes, they will remain as part of the landscape plan.
Yeah, and that might be another question you want to explore with the applicant?
Sure. And one more here on trees. When I look across Myrtle to the east at the Paragon property, I see along Olive Avenue, there are quite a few street trees in that sidewalk. I think I counted something like 15. I can't quite remember. I know that this is the renderings that we've seen here, like the one that has the amenity deck and the conceptual greenery plan is not final, but I see something like eight trees along that street. Have there been any discussions or could there be to increase that number?
We could certainly do, we could certainly have those discussions with the applicant and the city.
Is that something that could be added to conditions of approval of the landscape?
I think at this point, what we should probably do is, there's always that possibility, but it might be good to open the public hearing and start hearing from the applicant, getting public testimony before we start committing to conditions.
Great.
In this phase.
Cool. Okay. I've been on the stage for a while. Any other questions from, no?
This is definitely a small project. This is definitely a nice project, and there's a lot going on here. I think some of the discussions about concerns about building height and scale and the density is definitely can be seen. In comparison to, say, the Avalon project next door, from a height perspective, a density perspective, and how you compare the two projects together, can you give me some kind of comparison between the two? Like, is this more, is it less, is it in line with the Avalon project? Because a lot of the concerns that I saw after Avalon was done was that the scale was too big, and people had a lot of concerns about that. I heard that from the public. I heard that when there's rocking the streets, it didn't fit the mold of the downtown. I like that we set back some parts near Myrtle and Olive, going further back, so we don't have that same impact. But if you can answer some of those questions, that'd be great.
Yes, actually, Sheri, can you answer that? I know Avalon was constructed with a density bonus as a density process. Sheri can fill some with that.
Yes, thank you, John. So the Avalon project will likely be, is probably comparable in size to this particular project, so it measured 65 feet in height. That's what this project is proposing. The difference between the two projects is Avalon was developed with an above-grade five-story parking structure, so the units are wrapped around it. The other thing is, they also applied for a density bonus, and through that phase, there wasn't as much articulation as proposed on this project. So this project's actually developing their parking garage below grade, which allows for a lot more openings and articulations, especially on floors two through five, where across Olive, you can actually see into the project. And the design of the Avalon project was pretty much a box.
Yeah.
So comparable in height, but I would say this project was definitely more articulated, a lot more colors and materials incorporated into the architecture.
And that's what I see from the pictures. There's definitely a different view to the whole thing in terms of the architecture, in terms of the designs, the curvature. I do like that all. From the parking perspective, is there a ability, I know we're doing, I think, two levels, you said, two and a half levels, three levels? Is there, have we looked at the thought of, and I know this is probably nothing more for the city side to look at, but adding more parking that relates back to public use in there? Because we do have a parking issue in the city, which is the biggest complaint from all of the commercial users in the city of the stores here. And so is there a way to add more public parking here? It didn't seem like we had a lot of public parking here. It's all private parking, and that's a little bit of concern for me.
Yeah, so the project is actually parked based on, for the residential units, based on the state's density bonus law. The city cannot require any additional parking beyond that. For anything else that's proposed, this project actually parks the leasing area, the commercial area, and anything else, all the non-residential. Yeah, and with some surplus, if I'm not mistaken.
Is the guest parking for visitors only? Is it 50 guest spots?
50 spaces for the guests of the residents.
Residents only, okay. Okay, well, that's something that if there's a way to incorporate that more, I don't know, that's more what the city is seeing. If there's other ways to add that to the city, that could be a good time to do it, because I think we miss a lot when we don't do that when we build the projects, when we need more parking, as it is. And then the next thing is, I noticed that the commercial space is like, I think, 2,800 square feet or something like that, as I remember. But a big portion of the area that's on Myrtle is the fitness center that faces Myrtle. Did we look at that space as being, you know, to incorporate it more into the city along with the commercial and the walk? along with the commercial and the walk walking through the down Myrtle Street? Do we look at that being all commercial and then having the fitness off the main street? So we're not seeing that from the street. That's why we see more of the stores to go align with the rest of Old Town?
The development standards in our existing general plan, they do call out for a commercial space at the corner, right, which they fulfill. What's very different, when the standards, there's been a lot of changes, right, for non residential development.
Right.
Most housing developers, mixed use developers do not like to incorporate any particular. I think our team worked with the Scott Griggs team for over a year on convincing them to incorporate this particular ground floor commercial space in. And I think the idea of putting all the active uses along the ground floor achieves the pedestrian feel and activity. And we've that was consistently done with the Avalon project.
And I did see that with most with Avalon, with Paragon, with all of them, they they kind of do that. I'm just thinking about that. This is a kind of the entry point to the town. Is, you know, before before Avalon came, and I want to make sure that we don't. I wouldn't say have any same mistakes, but the same kind of feeling you have around Avalon. That's now we're getting closer to the to the downtown. That was some of the things I had there. There is. There are. I think I saw in one of the drawings, there was a loading zone in front on Myrtle too. Was that? Did I see that in there?
The the Myrtle access is for the for the residents and guests and the commercial space. The loading areas in the alley in the back.
Okay, I thought I saw in the drawing, it said loading there in the front too. Maybe I'm wrong on that.
Emergency vehicle.
That's emergency vehicle?
Maybe.
Okay, I have so many notes here, so. Okay, I'll stop right now.
Thanks, Commissioner Vasani. Just going back to one of the points Commissioner Vasani made. We were discussing the articulation that was made possible by this particular design on the north side of the building, fronting Olive Avenue. I don't see much of that articulation on the south side. Can you talk about the reasons for that? And if any of that was explored?
I think the the back the backside, the alley side is is probably the simplest design feature of the building. And there are some design tricks that the architect included to to make it look like the make it not look like a flat appearance, design tricks with paint and things like that. And I think that's really where the bulk of the the building really needs to occur along that alley portion right there and everything else is articulated. It was designed to slope down and towards Old Town Myrtle so that it doesn't create a very dramatic bulky mass in the corner. So the 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 design tricks were intended to soften the appearance on that on that south elevation.
So just an observation. You do get that sloping on the the Old Town side. But when you pass through the the art, the gate, the entrance to Old Town that's at the corner of Chestnut and and Myrtle, one of the first things you see is the south side bulk of this particular project.
One thing that staff appreciated with this project is that brick facade does wrap around the alley side so that when you're driving north on on Myrtle that you do have a portion that's that's brick for the visible part that you see. But yes, the rest of it is is flat.
Yeah, it does make that corner slightly more attractive. Question about the, is there any vision or development vision or thinking about the parcels that are immediately south of this property, between this property and Avalon? Right now, you said there are some residual industrial and commercial uses. Are there? Is there interest in changing that use to a mixed use like this? Can you just talk about that a little bit?
We we don't have anything proposed at this time, or we haven't had any expressed interest in that. But I believe that whatever is proposed would have to respond in context to the 701 South Myrtle project and everything around it.
Yeah, so and I just to reiterate that, you know, the general plan sets the vision for this area between Olive and Maple as this.
Old Town Extension.
Old Town Extension District. So the the base zoning is office research and development. The general plan has that designation. And then this overlay was added. I want to say in two, maybe 2008 to encourage, right, the redevelopment of these areas into mixed use projects.
Yeah, so it's likely that a future use of that area would be consistent with that.
Absolutely. And we could potentially get more projects within this area because that's we're really seeing these higher density projects where the general plan allows for them in this Old Town Extension District and Station Square.
Yeah, just, I mean, this is speculating, but we could end up with another project similar in scale and scope to this one on that property. And then we would have an alley of two backsides of mixed use projects meeting each other at that alley.
And just a reminder to the commission, now's the time for questions. We should save all opinions and observations until after the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, getting back to a question on the specific plan. I know you said, John, that, you know, this is really the specific plan is a tool to allow us to, you know, customize the the development for this particular area. Is there any concern of of this being a slippery slope here? Of the city, you know, losing some discretionary review authority in approving the additional density height and and floor area ratio for this project?
I would, I believe the specific plan is the city's planning tool to control and enforce the design that's in this plan. One thing that we lost during the project with the Avalon was, yes, they had a specific plan, but they came out of the ground with the density bonus. So really, there wasn't a lot of specific design review that that the city could conduct on that project. We did. But I think for this particular project, the city staff really worked hard to get a design that, you know, reacted to the comments that the community heard during the initial community meeting phase, respond to all the general plan, design criteria and guidelines that were outlined in the Old Town Extension District. I think it was really important that the specific plan didn't lose those, but built those into the entire plan.
More questions from anybody? No.
Just going back to the now to the density bonus and looking back at the affordable housing and just, can you kind of just recap some of the affordable housing numbers and, you know, moderate? And just tell me kind of where the numbers are at and towards going back to our plans.
Do you mean the?
Yes.
As in arena?
Yes. Kind of where this this fits into that.
Absolutely. So the city's six cycle housing element has a goal for the city to attain about 1,600 units, 1,670 units. Every project we that incorporates affordable housing, any housing contributes to the overall goal of those total housing units that we have a standard for each of the very low, low, moderate and above moderate. So all of these units would contribute to the city's attainment within the six cycle.
And these are mostly all moderate, right?
These were 17 low income and three moderate.
Okay, okay, thank you. Just one last question, actually. I know we were trying to do the setback of the heights to not be so big when you come back from Myrtle, looking at the site. And right right in the center, we have the the front part is five stories high. In the corner, there, is there a reason why they chose to go five stories right at the entrance of the of Myrtle and Myrtle and Olive?
I think this is just the design feature to help substantiate that corner, give it more presence.
Yeah, okay, just thinking about the the setback, why we did the setback of the four, the four levels. And then over here, you have this big one right in front. I get the design part of it.
No, yeah, I understand. And the general plan actually calls for a sit back along Myrtle Avenue between the third and fourth floors. So what this project did is it did that sit back at the fourth floor.
Okay, thanks for your time. Okay, thank you. I'm good.
It's okay. Any other questions that folks have thought of? I just have, I think, two more topics that I wanted to cover. Can you talk a little a little bit about the like water capacity? And like the studies that were done? And if this is more appropriate for the applicant, you can let me know. But just summarize things about the like total water demand.
Yeah, I'd be happy to defer that to the applicant's secret consultant.
I'll direct those to the applicant. And then, oh, could you talk a little bit how the the Parkland dedication or in lieu fee, how that works and the situation for this project?
Yes, actually, the the project applicant is required to either pay a no Parkland impact fee or join a community facilities district that would actually fund that. It's based on a formula, based on the number of residents. And that's collected before the certificate of occupancy is is issued.
Okay.
And that requirement is memorialized in the mitigation measures from our housing element. That's the root of that requirement and and the previous general plan amendment.
Very good. Okay, that exhausts my questions for for this part of the for this part of the meeting. So let's move along to the public testimony portion.
And Chair, before you move along, I just wanted to provide a few brief remarks.
Yeah.
So staff mentioned the city did receive a comment letter from Safer yesterday. And the developer's consultant will dive more deeply into the comment letter and the substance of that. But before doing so, I just wanted to let the commission know that the letter was received significantly after the period of time for public comments or for comment letters on the EIR. And if Safer Safer had a significant period of time to provide this comment letter and did not do so. And if they wanted an actual substantive response, they could have provided this comment letter during the comment letter period. Second, preliminarily, based on what we're able to evaluate at this late date, this letter is not new information and would not would not require any recirculation of the EIR. And then finally, as staff mentioned, the letter that was received from Safer will become part of the record and will be submitted to the city council prior to the public hearing at the city council meeting on this project and will be evaluated fully between now and then.
Very good, thank you. Should we hear the summary of the response from the consultant before or after opening the public testimony portion?
Yeah, great question. You should open the public testimony portion. And then we will hear as part of the applicant's presentation.
Very good.
A summary of the letter and the response.
All right, now that we've cleared up that, let's move on to the public testimony portion of this public hearing. So again, as a reminder for folks, this is the time and place for public input regarding page two. We'll accept testimony from the applicant first, then any persons in favor, then persons with concerns. And then the applicant will have a chance to respond. So if you would like to speak, when you come to the podium, please just state your name and direct your testimony to me. So with that, I would welcome the applicant to come forward and get us started.
Good evening. There is one item that I would like to clarify on the agenda. That it is BGP Myrtle LLC and it's written out BGB. But sorry. Good evening, staff and commissioners. My name is Scott Griggs. I'm a development manager with Blake Griggs Properties. We're located in Danville, California. We're a California based company with a proven track record in infill multifamily development. We have an affiliated company, Opportunity Housing Group, that works in providing moderate income housing. One of these is actually Moda, located over in Station Square. I also want to take this time to thank John Mayer for such an in depth and thoughtful presentation. This really makes my job a lot easier. His presentation reflected the history, collaboration, attention to detail and all the thought that have really gone into shaping this community. Some of you may be aware, I started my career playing professional baseball for for eight years. I actually spent some time in Rancho Cucamonga. If there's one thing I've learned over that time, it's it's really, you're only as good as the team that supports you. And I believe we've assembled one of the best teams in the industry. With us here tonight, we have Kenneth Walpita and Tobin Simak from AO Architects. Debbie Hallardia, our historic preservation consultant with Chaddle. Tracy Zen, our sequel consultant with T and B Planning. There's two groups that couldn't be here tonight, Kieran Wright, our civil engineer, and MJS, our landscape architect. I would also like to thank the Fetter family, Blaine, Linda and Nick, who have lived and conducted business here in Monrovia for many, many years. This all started when they approached us back in 2022 with a shared vision to create a community that helps bridge Old Town and Station Square by creating a pedestrian friendly and activated frontage between the districts. The Fetters will remain actively involved with the project and its vision throughout the process as the landowners. Since the inception of this project, we've worked very closely with the city and the community to refine this vision. We've hosted community outreach meetings, the first of that being in November 2023. That really helped us understand the rich history of the Old Town's character. The second meeting was held with the Monrovia Historic Preservation Group. That was in February of 2024. That's really where we refined the architecture to better match the historical content and context, the compatibility of the surrounding area. Following those conversations, you know, we wanted to make sure that we were crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. So we had Debbie complete the historic resource analysis, which concluded that there would result in no adverse impacts to the surrounding area's ability to gain historic designation in the future. With that input from the community, you know, we incorporated that into our design, as John noted, through steps in the massing, traditional brick and awning features, the small plazas, courtyards, walkability along the sidewalks, landmark building forms and distinct bulkheads on the storefronts. We're extremely proud of this proposed project. We've worked on it for three years. You know, I've run the day to day on this for three years. You know, I think it's a beautiful addition to Monrovia, to the community. It's going to provide 204 new homes, helping meet the city's RENA goals. 17 of those will be low income, three of those moderate, activating the ground floor with the commercial and residential fitness center, bringing both life and energy to this emerging Old Town Extension District. I want to thank the commission for your time, as well as the community who shared their input and ideas over the past few years. We believe this project honors Monrovia's rich history while looking towards the future. We fully support the staff's recommendations here tonight. And with that, I would like to invite Tracy Zen up, who is going to respond to Safer's letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Tracy Zen with the consulting firm TMB Planning, and I was the primary author of the environmental impact report. As mentioned, Safer submitted a comment letter on the EIR, which I think the city received, actually, we received this morning. I'm going to respond to it here verbally at the podium. So some of this information is for your benefit. Other of the information is a little bit technical, but I need to state it into the record, so it's in the public record. As staff mentioned, we will be preparing a written response to the letter that we will provide in advance of the city council meeting. Safer's concern were over two technical areas, the air quality analysis and the noise analysis. First, Safer claimed that the EIR should have included a construction health risk assessment. The EIR did include a localized significance threshold methodology and relied on the guidance of the South Coast Air Quality Management District and the modeling that the district recommends. The, the district does not recommend that a construction health risk assessment be done for projects of this size. Health risk assessments are typically done considering an exposure of the surrounding community of 70 years, seven, zero, 70 years. This project will only be, excuse me, under construction for approximately three years. So the state guidance does not require us to complete a health risk assessment. Attached to the Safer letter, they did perform a screening level health risk assessment using a software program called AirScreen. That software program is commonly known to overstate impacts. It does not take into consideration things like meteorological data, temporal data, like climate, wind direction, summer, winter, et cetera. So it, it does exaggerate health impacts when that model is run. We do not believe that it's credible evidence that this project would cause a significant health risk to the community. And we stand by the conclusions of the EIR that the impacts would be less than significant. They also questioned inputs into the air quality model. Air quali, the air quality modeling was done using CaliMod. That is a software program developed by the California Air Pollution Control Officers Association. And it's the model most often used to calculate air quality impacts under Sequo across most of California. CaliMod uses defaults of data based on surveys of actual projects throughout the state of California. Those defaults can be overridden when project-specific information is available, and we did that. We contacted the applicant, asked them a lot of questions about their construction process. How many construction employees are they going to have on the site? What type of equipment are they going to have on the site? What's their construction schedule going to be? So we overrode the defaults for everything where the information was actually available. Safer complained that all of the defaults were not overridden, but it wasn't possible to do that. Things like the distance that dirt would be hauled during the export operation. The applicant won't know that until they actually get to construction and know where their dirt's going. So we did continue to rely on the default, which was 20 miles, which is very conservative. And in fact, the earth hauling will probably not be that long. The second topic was noise. So in the Safer letter, in general, they nitpicked the noise analysis. It was prepared by a professional noise modeler and peer-reviewed by a technical expert hired by the city. Impacts will be less than significant and in compliance with the city's noise ordinance, which sets hours for construction. As was mentioned in the staff presentation, there will be a construction noise management plan that will be implemented during construction. So if the noise on the ground exceeds what the standards are, the applicants are required to pause construction, erect a sound attenuation barrier, and continue monitoring to make sure that the noise levels stay beyond the level of significance. So we are strongly confident that the analysis presented in the EIR and the supporting technical reports is sound and that the comments submitted by Safer do not contain merited information that would give us any pause for the planning commission to not recommend certification of the EIR. Again, we intend to respond to all the comments in writing before the city council meeting. Do you have any other questions for me while I'm up here?
Do we have any further questions from the commission?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zen. Do we have anyone else from the applicant team who would wish to speak? All right. Do we have questions for the applicant while, while we're here? Mr. Griggs, if you don't mind, could I ask you about the water capacity study that was done? And to talk a little bit more about that part of the project?
Yes, I'm actually going to default back to Tracy.
Okay. Sorry, of course, after we said we had no more for you, we make you get back up.
Yeah, that's okay. And as mentioned, the civil engineer isn't here, but I think I could probably answer the question. So as part of the final EIR, a water demand assessment was done. It is attached to the final EIR as attachment one, the water capacity study. So that study looked at all of the potential water use opportunities on the site, including the residential units, the commercial units, down to like how much water is it going to take to refill the swimming pool? And based on the capacity or the water demand, it was calculated that the project's estimated water demand will be approximately 39.2 acre feet per year. That was compared against the available supply, and it was determined that there is enough supply in the city system. There are not any upgrades needed even to like the pipe sizes. And the project's going to just connect to the lines that are adjacent to the property and the streets.
Thank you. And then I think maybe for city staff, for projects of this size that are tapping into utilities like that, is there a fee that, that these projects also pay to support that use of the infrastructure?
There, oops, there is a higher water rate for multifamily housing. It was passed several years ago.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder on that. Any more questions before Ms. Zen sits down again? Okay. All right. Do we have any other questions for the applicants? All right. Thank you again for speaking with us. Let's move on to any persons in favor in the audience. Please just state your name.
Good evening. My name is Blaine Fetter. I was the developer, along with George Boone, of this project in 1979. This was the first project that our firm did in the city of Monrovia, and I would call it a first date. We had a great track record in other places in Los Angeles County. And Monrovia was in trouble. It was in trouble. This is not a simple place to imagine coming and building a development. But I'd grown up in Arcadia. My wife grew up, Linda Boone, in San Marino. So we knew the area. We knew the area west of, which was barely the new 605210 junction. And decided to do this, again, as a first date. It was an improvement over, and I'll be honest with you, what Gene's Grinders project had been a few years before. And the city was very disappointed in that outcome. So we brought this in as sort of a hybrid project. In terms of the use, it can be office, it could be industrial. We made it architecturally more attractive than what had been developed in the area. Over the years, that building has incubated or spawned some major companies here in the city of Monrovia. One of the best was a company called Sebeyond, which some of you might recall, but they went from 180 square foot office space to 250,000 square feet here in the city. We had the good fortune to develop all of the projects for them. So our history here in the city is storied. We've been very successful, as has the city of Monrovia, and we've been very proud of the relationship we've had. For the last 10 years, I've been looking at the Myrtle All Business Park going, this, it's got to go. But what are we going to do with it? It's got to be special. Every time we've done a project in this city, we've attempted to make it better than the one that we've done before. I've known Mr. Griggs, Brad Griggs, for 20 years and knew of, I know all of his history. And he is a nearly gifted multifamily developer. So we handpicked him. I mean, thinking about picking somebody from the Bay Area to come down here. But we knew and had such a high degree of confidence in him that we wanted him. The interesting part of this property is it's family-owned. And it's now into the second and third generations of the family. And it's a little bit of an important piece in their, their life, their portfolio. They need to get that check every month. So the idea of selling this would never replace what they were getting. So what we're going to be doing is participating in the ownership of this project. So it's very important to the Boone Fetter family. And final comment I want to make is, I planted those trees. We tried multiple trees. These trees are not worth saving. I would love to take you on some tours of our projects because our landscape is fantastic. And these are not indigenous trees. I'm going to be honest with you. I think out of frustration, we got a deal and we stuck those in there after the sycamore trees that we had planted. There's just the, we could never get them to survive. So anyway, I'm happy to meet with any of you at some point in time, and we'll take you on a tree walk. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your, for your testimony. Any other persons wishing to speak in favor? All right. Any persons who with concerns? Seeing zero people with concerns, no need for the applicant to respond. So let's move forward. The public testimony portion of the hearing is closed now. We can deliberate and discuss. Sorry, keep turning my back to you. Further questions? Go ahead. I see something brewing. I mean, I think Chelsea would agree, now is the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have those kind of discussions. So you're welcome to express those things.
Yeah, I know that there is concern about parking and, you know, parking shortage. You know, where my fellow commissioner was wanting more. I was sitting here looking like, well, we have a surplus according to the requirement. And so I was like, you know, what is the purpose of that? But, and then I think one of the things I, I just want to have a comment on is while parking is important to consider, and I think we have secured the at least requirement based on the density bonus. I think to, my fellow commissioner's comment is, this, I, I do believe there, the parking that's currently on site and the parking that's going to be there, it's, it's not technically like a city-owned public parking lot. And so I, my, my only comment was like, while I think that we could use more parking, I think that like we can't, we can't force them to do the parking that like is not taking away public parking. So that was just like a, a thought process, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Excellent point. Question, comment?
No.
Okay. Hold, hold, hold that for a moment. I'd just like to revisit. Do we have anything else from staff? Okay. I just want to revisit some of the earlier things that I had mentioned about trees. Just looking at, in the conditional use permit at condition 15, I think it is, that's the one that's about the landscape plan or landscaping. Is it possible? I would like to strike the where feasible for the existing street trees along Myrtle Avenue. I feel like where feasible is implied in the, in the generation of a, of a landscaping irrigation plan. Am I wrong there? Would it be reasonable to strike that?
I guess my, my, my initial concern is that we haven't evaluated it yet. So when we say where's, where feasible is we do our greatest effort to make sure a project, you know, can preserve, but we balance that with the reality of trying to get the project off the ground. We could add a condition that requires that the, the landscape plan go to the development review committee for oversight and final kind of review to make sure we've covered all of our basis on, on that. That's not something we normally do, but given maybe the scope of this project, that's something the applicant would, would be willing to, to do, given the sensitivity regarding tree removal.
Yeah, I would say thank you for that suggestion. I resonate with that. And given that this is so central to this area and, you know, the, the landscaping and the design features of this particular project will be here for a long time to come. I would be in favor of adding that condition. I'm seeing some nods.
And I think what the, the city staff would also bring forward with that review to the, to the development review committee is not just the planning staff review, but maybe a coordinated review with the, with the arborists working on the project to also make their presentation to the DRC.
And I'm assuming it would also talk about how it's consistent with the general plan.
Oh, absolutely. The specific plan.
Great. Okay, I like that. I think that addresses one of my concerns. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I'm good.
Okay.
Far away. Move to a dot planning commission resolution number PCR 2025-004, recommending approval to the city council of environmental impact report 00, excuse me, for 701 South Myrtle, specific city plan and development project, including certification, adoption of, adoption of findings, a fax approval of report, reporting program. Planning Commission Resolution Number PCR 2025-005, recommending approval to the city council of the general plan amendment GPA 2025-002 to establish planning and development area 29 PD 29 for 1.61 acre project site. Adopt planning commission resolution PCR 2025-006, recommending approval to city council of 701, 701 South Myrtle, specific plan SP 2025-002. Adopt planning commission resolution PCR 2025-007, recommending approval to city council of zoning ordinance, ordinance number 2025-12 and map amended amendment ZA 2025-001 to reclassify the property from RRD LM to specific plan. Remove, recommend approval to city council of tentative parcel map number 085041 and conditional use permit CUP 2025-0010, subject to conditions and recommendations in the staff report.
With condition number 15 modified to.
With condition number 15 modified.
To include a review of the landscape.
To include DRC to review the landscape.
There we go. All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Scheffler deserves some water. Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Janicek?
Yes.
Scheffler?
Yes.
Fashani?
Yes.
Acting Chair Stahira?
Yes. All right, with that, motion is approved. Would you like to read the appeal language?
Oh, no appeal language for this one?
No, no appeal, because this is, these are resolutions going to the city council. Thank you.
And our anticipated council hearing is December 5th. Oh, second. Like I said, December 2nd.
And I just want to say, I want to thank the applicant and the city staff for all the work that they put into this, both the project itself and itself and the presentation. It made our job easier for sure, and looking forward to seeing this go forward. Okay, with that, we can move along. In the agenda for tonight's meeting, I see we have no administrative reports on the docket. However, I think we do have development update from the Community Development Director, Director Burmahal.
All right. Take it away. Thank you very much. Just wanted to let the commission know that our building division's currently working on the new building code update that will go into effect on January 1st. So he will be taking the introduction of the 2025 building code to the meeting on December 2nd, and we will be kind of reaching out to see if anyone's interested in looking at it ahead of time. But again, these are really state standards that will be adopted. It's very exciting, something that the building official gets to do every three years. Wanted to share about that.
Cool. Any other development updates from you?
No, I think this 701 South Myrtle Avenue project has taken up a lot of John's time and our city attorney's time. A lot of teamwork makes the dream work effort was involved in this.
Yeah, how long have you been working on it again?
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years. That is a substantial chunk of time. All right. I did want to mention, next week, the thankful and grateful celebration is happening on Thursday, so hope to see any of you there. Any other reports or announcements from my fellow commissioners?
Yeah, staff, everybody involved in this project, it's awesome. It's, it's, no questions. Did a lot of reading. You guys did a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay. With that, I believe we can adjourn the meeting at 9:22.
It says 10:22?
I know. We can adjourn to our next meeting on December 10th, 2025.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you for leading tonight's meeting, Erin.
Happy to do it.